Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectment meeting of June 23rd to order at 7:36. Our apologies to everyone here in the audience. We are running late due to our executive session. We went over much later than we had anticipated. So, we're going to move right into the transmitting of Treasury warrants 49, 49A, 50, and 50A. Do we have a motion?
Motion, so move. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Anything further? All those in favor? Unanimous. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for May 12th, 2014. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move to approve the minutes of May 12th, 2014.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, but thank you. Moving on to our 7 o'clock appointment with Julio Favuza, Assistant General Manager of BGP Tavern LLC, doing business as Red Heat Tavern. The request is to obtain an entertainment license for the property located at 300 Lowell Street. Is Mr. Favuza here, please?
Do you have permission on subbing for him?
Sure.
Kevin Heron, President of...
Welcome. If you could...
Hi, how are you?
Sure. If you'd like to take a few minutes to brief the board as to the purpose of your presence here and educate us on what you're looking for the board to vote on.
Yeah, we're just seeking entertainment license in the event that we want to do some perhaps early evening entertainment, perhaps a little bit later in evening entertainment. I think we applied for three musicians, just as an added feature to help bring some business into the restaurant. It's not our intent to change the nature of the business, just to enhance what we're doing right now, so...
Does anyone on the board have any questions? Before we do that, I'd like to turn it over to the manager, just to give some recommendations from our department heads.
Yes, I have a recommendation from the police chief. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the entertainment license application submitted by Mr. Kevin Heron on behalf of BGP Tavern LLC, doing business as Red Heat Tavern, 300 Lowell Street, Wilmington. Also, from the fire department. The fire department has reviewed the current application for an entertainment license. The location listed above, having no reservations or immediate concerns, recommends approval. And then we have L. Spalding, Building Inspector. Have reviewed the application for the above property and have no outstanding zoning issues.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, I'll start with the board to my right. Selectman Newhouse, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Anything here?
Pretty routine, yeah. No questions?
No, it's not. The recommendations are positive. I have no questions.
Okay. Hearing nothing further, would anyone like to make a motion to grant the request?
I move to grant the request as presented by Mr. Heron.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving right along to our next appointment is with Michael J. Woods, DPW Director and Co. Ishikura, President of Green International Affiliates, Inc. The reference is regarding concept design for Route 38 from Route 62 to the Uuban City Line. Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. What brings us here is after my initial appointment as DPW Director, we took a look at the TIP projects and how we could get on some of these, get some of this money that funds a lot of these roadways in the Rambo. A lot of our neighbors are seeing, we can tell they follow this program, and we really haven't done much since Lowell. I talked with Co. from Green International and talked about finishing up Route 38 from intersection Lowell's gone about 10, 12 years ago, bringing it down to the Uuban line. We've looked at it conceptually, and Co. has had his presentation. And what I would ask you, if you are in favor of this proposal, is that we get a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen, and it will start the process to get this on the TIP, which is a long, arduous process, 10, 12 years, public works of construction, but it gets it by improving business mind for funding the...
So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Co. Ishikura. I'm the President of the Green International Affiliates, Inc. I'm here with Jason Sobel, our Senior Transportation Engineer. We are assisting the town to develop a very conceptual plan of the Route 38 Main Street improvement, as Mike said, from the, at the Route 62 intersection all the way to the Uuban Town Line. And at this time, I want to hand over the presentation to Jason, and he will go through the current conceptual design proposed by us.
Hello. So, I thought we would start by a quick review of the corridor. It's a fairly long corridor, slightly over two miles, and we can review the existing issues that are out there, as well as the goals that we would have to make the roadway improvements, and then take a look at traffic operations in a few key intersections. So, some of the existing problems that are out there today are the lack of bicycle accommodations along the roadway. These days, both within Mastod and within the larger industry, there's a big push for complete streets design, which is really intended to accommodate all users. So, not just a focus on vehicles, but bicycles, pedestrians, anyone who might be using the roadway. So, there's a lack of bicycle accommodations today. There aren't continuous sidewalks, and there are some pretty poor traffic operations as well, with high delays and long vehicle queuing. So, the goals for this project would be a complete streets design, consistent with Mastod standards. We would provide continuous bicycle lanes in both directions, as well as a sidewalk on at least one side of the street throughout the entire corridor, and of course, improved traffic operations as well. So, when we're talking about complete streets, what we have at the top is a conceptual plan of just, you know, a small portion of the roadway. This is in between Lowell Street and Route 62. But this slide is really intended to show the typical cross-section. So, we would have the bicycle lanes on both sides, 12-foot vehicle lanes, and sidewalk on at least one side of the roadway here. At Cross Street, which is in the middle of the entire corridor, there's some pretty significant changes that would go along with this project, consistent with the improvements in the town-purchased recreational area off of Cross Street. What we recommend is consistent with the MAPC study from last fall, the Metropolitan Area Planning...
Council.
Council. And so, the changes to Cross Street would be, instead of a two-way roadway, would be a one-way roadway away from Main Street towards Lowell Street. The real reason behind that is some safety issues with vehicles exiting Cross Street onto Main Street. But by also making it one-way, it gives us a little more flexibility. We can put a bike lane on Cross Street, as well as have on-street parking to support the future recreational area, as well as the sidewalk along the edge of the roadway as well. Another key aspect that I've talked about a little bit would be the pedestrian access, not just along Main Street itself, along Cross Street to connect to the future recreational area, but we would also have a crosswalk, and then the sidewalk would continue on the west side of the road all the way down to the Uuban Line. That would provide pedestrian connection to the town park and the baseball field and the trails down on the other side of the railroad tracks there. And we would want to be sure to have an enhanced pedestrian crossing, maybe with some flashing warning lights, something of that nature, to really get driver's attention. You know, there's no crossings across Main Street today, and it might be unexpected. So, we'd want to ensure that that crosswalk is located at the best possible location in terms of safety, and really raise the awareness that there's a new crossing there. And then, Main Street at Church Street in Burlington Ave., Route 62. This is the biggest bottleneck in terms of traffic congestion along the corridor, and there are also a lot of existing limitations along the roadway that would make it difficult to do widening and somewhat limit the options. Some of those limitations are existing businesses right at the back of sidewalk on the east side of the roadway, and the existing bridge over the railroad tracks, as well as a retaining wall near the MBTA commuter rail station. That said, there are opportunities to significantly improve traffic operations by restriping the roadway, and what we're proposing to do would be to restrike the southbound approach. Today, it's a two-lane approach with shared left turns and through vehicles in the left-hand lane. And what we would do is restrike the roadway, have an exclusive left-turn lane, and we believe we can fit that in while maintaining the existing on-street parking on the northeast side of Main Street there. Although, the shoulder on the other side gets a little tight, but we believe it can fit in. Similarly, on Burlington Ave. on the bridge, we believe, again, we can narrow the shoulders a little bit and squeeze in a left-turn lane here, instead of having a shared through-left lane, as it is today. And then, of course, with the restripped lane configuration, we would also have traffic signal timing and phasing optimization, as well as probably minor signal equipment improvements as well. So, next, this is just a still image. Let me bring up a traffic simulation that we've done. I'm going to show you two simulations, both in the afternoon peak hour. That seems to be the more critical period. And the first simulation is really just the existing conditions, and it'll be pretty clear how bad it is, particularly...
It's not showing it.
No, it's not showing it. All right. There we go. So, again, this is the afternoon peak hour, and I've sped it up, so it's moving a little bit faster than real time, just in the interest of, you know, getting more than, you know, so we don't have to wait here for 15 minutes to watch the peak hour. And I'm sure everyone who's driven out here and is familiar with it, you know, particularly the northbound queues on Main Street, you know, these are backing up very far, probably all the way down to Lowell Street. And, I mean, I've been out there. I don't drive it every day, but I've been out there. I've observed during the peak hours. I've observed during the off-peak hours, and this is certainly consistent with what I've seen out there. And I'm sure, I'm sure everyone else here is very familiar with it as well. So, that said, let me bring up the proposed conditions now. And as you can see, the northbound queue in the afternoon is significantly reduced. It's not completely gone, but it does clear out and move much better than the existing conditions, and certainly a lot fewer queuing on the side streets as well. So, on the whole, the lane configuration changes, and combined with the traffic signal optimization, can really make significant improvements here without changing the geometric, you know, edge-of-road layout in this area. All right.
Want to go back?
Sure, let me go back. I know everyone really likes looking at the simulations. I thought I'd just leave it up a little bit longer. All right. All right, so now I'm going to hand the presentation back to Co., who will talk a little bit more about the Mastod process.
Yes, so, you know, by presenting this up in conceptual, you know, plans, and also filling, preparing the necessary paperwork to Mast DOT, we try to secure the, you know, construction funding for this project. So, next step, what we need to do is, we need to prepare this, you know, two required forms, so the project can be built as a, you know, transport TIP project, and we need to prepare project initiation form, project need form, and as part of these forms, the endorsement of the selectman for this project is essential, so that's why we are here. And once we submit these forms to Mastod, they have this project review committee, consists of, you know, Mast DOT and also Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Actually, in the handout, there's more details there. I'm just going to do the quick, you know, bullets points, go through there, and once it's approved by the project review committee, that project will be eligible for TIP funding. So, that's where we are trying to get there. And part of the, to be in a TIP funding, town pays for the design and state pays for construction. But once we get approval for TIP, we can revisit this issue. So, that's our presentation. If you'd like to ask any questions, you may have.
I think at this point, what I'd like to do is turn it over to the board first, and then I'm going to open it up to the public to ask questions as well. First of all, thank you very much for your presentation. We really do appreciate it. What I'd like to do is start to my left with Selectman Shampoo, please.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for coming here this evening and for the hard work on this presentation. One observation, and I guess I'll say concern, but I sort of defer to your recommendations. Cross Street as a one-way struck me, just because, you know, I'm a frequent user of Cross Street in both directions, and that access to it only in one direction will be, I guess, an adjustment like all of this will be. But you're, you maintain that that one-way direction, I guess, northbound from Main Street only, will be an improvement or an enhancement to the flow of traffic in the region?
Yes, I do believe that. In addition to, not just enhance the flow of traffic from a traffic operations point of view, but also from a safety point of view. There's a vertical curve to the south of Cross Street on Main Street, which limits the site distance looking to the south, and it's been identified as an issue previously by the MAPC, and we agree with their assessment, and we think it's for the best. In addition to traffic safety, there's also the added benefit of then having a little more flexibility in terms of complete streets and uses along Cross Street to support the new recreation area that's planned.
Okay. And I appreciate the expanded answer. I guess we kind of assumed what you would say, but wanted to hear it again. Last question I have is, with regards to the restriping at the primary intersection in question, Church, Main, Burlington, it seems like a lot of what you described really doesn't involve construction, per se, but rather some restriping. And my question, I guess, would be maybe to Mr. Hall or Mr. Woods or others, even while we wait for 10 or longer years for this project to materialize, can we take some small bites and maybe look at some of this restriping and achieve some of the advantages that they've illustrated for us this evening? That doesn't seem like a tremendously costly and expensive portion, but again, maybe I'm...
Yeah, well, we can talk to the town, and if that town wants us to look into the interim solution, we can certainly look at it. But, you know, yeah, I guess we can look at interim solution if the town decided you want us to look at it. There's certain things we can do. We do have some widening proposals at this location, Jason pointed out.
Right. I'm not sure if I mentioned it during the presentation. This area here is the only area that, in the immediate area of the intersection that we're proposing to widen, and the reason for that is there's two southbound lanes today that then have to merge almost as you go through the intersection today. And by widening, it would require a retaining wall because of the steep slope down to the commuter rail. But really widening it, you know, we're not talking about carrying two lanes all the way through, but just a little bit further from the intersection to allow for smoother traffic operation southbound and a smoother merge.
Right. Yeah, I don't want to break the process. It just occurred to me, boy, I saw the queuing clearing out a little bit faster than it was prior, so...
Absolutely. It's a big improvement.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'm looking at it with pros and cons. I think it would be wonderful to take care of some projects at hand, like a Glen Road, before we start looking into the future here. I mean, it seems like, you know, and I can say this, living in this community for a long time, I don't ride a bicycle, and we accommodate people, I'm seeing extreme bicycle people that wear their spandex in the community. I mean, it seems like we're trying to accommodate them, more so than some of the traffic pattern here in this community. And we got these people out and halfway out in the street, and you say, well, we're going to give them five feet on both sides. It seems like we're accommodating more of that, as opposed to really taking care of intersections, safety. I'm looking at one-way on Lowell Street, maybe to take care of the intersection. I'm not saying you put a light there, but it seems like that's all we've ever done, is we put a light here and there. We move traffic quickly from one area to another area. I just think one lane on Lowell Street, my own opinion, I think you'd want two lanes on Lowell Street. Configure that intersection a little bit better. You know, I mean, that's, we talk about smart development, and that's why we support it and put the corner doors up in Wilmington Center, because they're going to use the terrain. But is this really, I just see us taking care of more of extreme bicyclists, people. We're in the spandex driving around town. They're holding up traffic right now. It's a five feet. Maybe we should give them 10 feet. You know, I mean, we've made complaints, and I know people contacted the police department, and we've had several people just in the middle of the road, and I don't know, just...
Yeah. I can answer to that question. You know, the reason we propose this bicycle lane is, in order to get funding from Mast DOT, that's their current requirement. So, if we don't propose that bicycle lane, we cannot get the funding. So, that's really the, to be honest, the bottom line for us. So, they're, you know, we do Mast DOT, you know, several Mast DOT jobs, working, you know, every year, and, you know, we, basically, they're pretty adamant about this bike lane. There's no way around for us. So, that is a reason, and going back to the selectman, previous selectman's questions, because of that, we do need some wider, minor widening throughout the corridor, so, but we can do that widening within existence right away, most of the case.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, you're talking about any land takings at all? By widening the road at all?
Not, at this point, very conceptual. We are not anticipating any major taking at all, probably mostly temporary construction is made.
Well, it just seems like, it's interesting to bring that up, and you're saying, well, if we don't do the bicycle route, there's going to be no funding for this project. It's almost putting a gun to our heads to say to us, well, you got to have this, if not, you can't get that. And I don't really buy into that. I think, you know, that's, I mean, I personally don't buy into that. I really don't. Thank you.
Mr. Woods, did you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to make a comment. You mentioned Glen Road. We are moving, albeit slow forward on that project, and it does require bicycle lanes. There won't be bicycle lanes in that intersection, I suppose, with Mastod.
Is that possible? I'll go with the same.
Anything, President?
No, thanks.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, too, was like the Glen Road project. I'm all for getting projects ready to go, shovel-ready, if you will, to get some funding. But that project at the end of Glen Road is, I believe we voted on that five or six years ago, with a light or the roundabout, and that was put in a couple times, I believe, for the shovel-ready project. So, you're saying 10 or 12 years for this. Is that a conservative estimate, or is there some way of...
Yeah. Okay. Glen Road project, what happened was actually advertisement date, we had a scheduled advertisement date in April, and there was, the transportation bond bill passed. When the transportation bond bill passed, that Glen Road project was supposed to be constructed, actually, it's called non-federal funding, so state, they are going to build that project state money. So, when the transportation bond bill was passed, that portion of the funding was actually significantly cut for Mast DOT. So, they lost the funding. Then now, what they're trying to do is, they try to, that's a small job compared to the overall scheme, so they are trying to squeeze in the project for advertisement. So, that process is ongoing. So, you know, I'm optimistic that jobs, you know, should be advertised without waiting too long. To answer your question, I think Mike said 10 years, but obviously, our intention is to move the project as, you know, fast as we can. So, hopefully, you know, you know, construction starts without, you know, waiting 10 years, more like, hopefully, three, four years range.
Couple months.
Three, four years range, realistically. Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions to follow up on a couple of issues that were already raised. First, if you could put up the slide for the Cross Street intersection, and Mr. Shampoo asked for a little more information regarding the one-way, and I kind of got absorbed in these materials, and I apologize if you got to this specific point, but are there any improvements that are expected to be necessary for the intersection to service people traveling south on 38, turning into Cross Street for that one-way, in light of what's going to be at that property on Cross Street? Or is the intersection as it exists going to be able to pick up that added traffic?
I think, well, we are proposing some geometric changes. This area here is really to allow for a smooth southbound left turn into Cross Street there, without having to go up onto the dirt or, you know, for larger vehicles making that turning movement.
Okay. So, that, so what you're, that illustration there is reflecting some minor changes to that intersection?
That's correct.
Yes, but that development's actually being designed by another firm, who is, you know, and they have some idea of that, some intersection geometry change. So, again, this is very conceptual, you know, phase. We need to a little bit coordinate with that, you know, consultant who's doing the field, and we probably need to look at it a little bit more carefully at the intersection. Like Jason said, we certainly want to accommodate certain size of truck, making a left turn onto Cross Street or a right turn onto Cross Street from Route 38. We, to be, I don't know if we, we didn't design to that degree yet, right?
That's correct. It's still too preliminary.
Yeah, too preliminary.
We didn't really get into the detailed design of the intersection yet.
So, we just kind of showing, you know, concept, and we probably need to a little bit work on that aspect.
Okay. And I guess the mere fact that you recognized and acknowledged the, you know, the future build-out of that site, and the possible need for changes, at least conceptually, is, I guess that's all we could expect from you tonight. I understand it's conceptual, but, you know, that at least gives us enough to continue to make sure that both your team and the team that's working on the entile site are in communication and have, you know, a flow of information. The other question that I had, and you answered it, if you could go back to the intersection of Main Street and Church Street, and when you kind of circled back on your discussion, you talked about widening that section of Main Street in the southbound lane.
Down here.
Right, exactly, exactly. And understanding that this is just conceptual, do we even have a grasp on who the record owner of that property is? Is it the railroad?
Yes.
I've always assumed it is.
It is the railroad.
Okay. All right. In terms of either linear feet, or, you know, if anyone's familiar with that section where it merges from two lanes to one, is it roughly 50% longer than what's there, twice as long? What's, conceptually, what do you think works and is possible?
Again, you know, this is a conceptual design. What we had shown in this conceptual design is about 250 feet of widening, with a maximum widening of eight or nine feet.
Okay.
And that would really extend the two lanes. Today, you basically have to merge as soon as you get across the intersection, and this would extend it maybe 100 or 150 feet, and then have a smooth transition that meets current standards when you go from the two-to-one lane drop.
Okay.
And that's really the purpose of the widening there.
Okay. And then, just one more question that was touched on earlier with the bicycle lanes. And I, you know, I can look this up myself, but you may very well know off the top of your head. When you have an established bicycle lane like that, is the, is the rider legally obligated to stay within that lane? I mean, is that part of every project that you deal with? Do you face that question?
I, to be honest with you, I don't know that, the answer.
Okay. Okay. And I, I, I mean, I want to acknowledge that's not something you necessarily would be prepared to address in here. Um, but just to follow up on some of the concerns that were raised here, I mean, if we're dealing with, if that's our, if that's our reality, that, you know, we don't get the money from DOT unless we have bicycle lanes, um, it's just something worth following up on to make sure that we as a town understand what, you know, what the user's obligation's going to be. Because I, I share this frustration that some of the other folks up here have expressed. Um, if, if you're going to make those kinds of significant accommodations, one would hope that, um, there's an enforceable requirement for people to use it the right way. So, uh, that's more of an observation than anything. Nothing further here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask, northbound on 129, you're not going to be able to take the left on the cross-street, so you're going to go up to the next intersection where the shell is. That also is not a lot of two-lane space there with the few cars that are taking left there. And the right's usually the green arrow. Is that something you're going to be looking at, maybe widening, uh, lengthening that two-lane area, too?
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
Coming northbound on 129 from 93.
Yes.
Lowell Street. You can take a left on cross-street. We're not going to be able to do that anymore. So you go up to the next intersection where the shell is to bend back around.
And turn left on to Main Street.
Yeah. Is there going to be some kind of accommodation there to maybe lengthen that?
Yeah, we'll have to take a closer look at that, but that's something, certainly something that we would want to consider as we move forward with the design.
Yeah. You're going to pick up some traffic up there, obviously, but I don't know exactly how much it will be.
Yeah, I, I understand, uh, you know, what you're indicating. Obviously, uh, you know, cross-street, some of the traffic, uh, you know, coming from Lowell Street towards Route 38, you know, making a left turn now, have to go, uh, make a left turn at Route 38. So there's some, uh, you know, pickup on the volume there. So as part of the process, we would look at, are we coordinating these two intersections? We are, right?
Uh, no, I think it's too far to coordinate.
So we, we would look at, uh, you know, intersection as part of the, this project, again, as well, to accommodate the cross-street, you know, one-way, two-way change.
I'd be worried about people in that, in that same direction cutting through the private parking lot, the shopping area there. No? Making the cut-through before getting to the sharp turn?
Do you have any further?
It's a very good point. I'm just going to make a couple quick comments. MAPC came in through the help of Carol to the Yentile Development Committee and went through a presentation. The same concerns were voiced that Mr. Samogliars indicated that essentially by doing the one-way would push traffic up to that next intersection, and that was, you know, an enlightening point to MAPC during that meeting. Indirectly, also, there is the private businesses that Selectman Shampoo was talking about, that there's a parking lot access that people will take a shortcut through that's essentially between cross-street and that next intersection. So you're basically redispersing traffic in another way, which is going to bottleneck in other areas and may be, you know, problematic. So that's something that's definitely important. Um, the concept of the off-street parking on cross-street, and also the bike path as well, the intent would be that the Yentile project would be potentially started and completed before your project based on the 10-year timeframe. We're still in the conceptual stage, and I should just note that I am on that committee as well, as is Carol, that I'm concerned that some of the funding allocations that you may be appropriating are already part of our cost structure, or maybe part of our cost structure ahead of when you are ready to go into the ground. So I, we'd have to talk about what makes sense to work collectively on that, but I'm concerned the timelines are not going to coincide.
Certainly, that is, you know, Co had mentioned previously, the need for the coordination between the projects, and certainly, uh, the topics you bring up, and what specifically is part of that project versus part of this project.
Correct.
Would have to be worked out. Um, I don't see an issue of the cross-street improvements if that is part of the first project and moves ahead before the Main Street improvements. Initially, I don't see a, a particular concern about, you know, the, it being incompatible with the existing Main Street conditions.
Right. Conceptually, we agreed with, you know, what they're doing. So we kind of integrated so far what they proposed into our design. So there's no big discrepancy what they're proposing or what we are proposing. There, there are coordination issues, and we need to address which project, which part of the project should be built under the recreational project, which part of the project should be, uh, built under this project. But, uh, that, to me, it's a coordination issue, nothing to, uh, you know, preclude both of us, you know, working, uh, you know, separately.
Sure.
Yeah.
The other thing is, we're going to have an, an in and out proposed on Main Street for Yentile. And I know this is a bigger discussion, but the concern is having a bike lane now that's going to be, and I understand what you're saying about Mass DOT requiring that. And that, you may not know the answer to this question, but I'll ask it anyway, is that, it's my understanding that the speed limit on that road is 45 miles an hour, and that's assuming that a car is traveling at that rate of speed. And I would go so far as to personally say cars travel much faster than that. So does Mass DOT look at the rate of speed that a bicyclist is traveling with a moving car and says, this maybe isn't a really good idea? And I say that respectfully, but I mean, that is a, is a very, um, high-speed limit right there.
You don't want to say that, or...
Well, uh, certainly, speed data would be part of all the data that, that we collect when we move forward with the design process.
Okay.
Um, as to whether or not Mastot would seriously consider, uh, you, the, the, the speed of the traveling vehicles as whether or not it's appropriate, uh, my experience has been that Mastot, in the past several years, has taken the attitude of, if, if they don't build the bike lanes now, the road's not going to get rebuilt for another 40, 50 years. Who knows when it's going to get rebuilt? And they want to see it built to their standards now.
Right. So, during the presentation, Jason used the word complete streets. There's actually, uh, Secretary of Transportation issued the directive to Mass DOT staff. You know, this is the way it is. And, uh, you know, our experience working on, uh, you know, multiple projects, they are pretty strictly following that. Secretary, the directive. And, uh, so, so, uh, I, my experience working with, you know, Mastot, uh, for other towns with our bicycle lane, it's going to be difficult to get the funding.
You know, the other thing, too, as you travel through a community like Bedford, they have a bicycle lane that runs through pathways that get you to all other adjacencies. You know, my experience, and correct me if I'm wrong for the town of Wilmington, is that we'd essentially be having bike lanes that start and stop, and then we're essentially putting a bicyclist, you know, back to a reduced roadway at a very high rate of speed. So I feel like, you know, you have a, you have a bicyclist, you have a moving car at a very high rate, you have a compromised intersection of Butters Row and Pro Street with site clances that are very accident-prone. It's just we're introducing players to an environment that, as it extends right now, we're already not doing so well from an accident perspective in that location. I think we're introducing another element of a safety issue in the town that, you know, I understand money's tied to it, and I, I think I've made the point, as have other board members, I think, giving funding at the, at the sake of potential personal injury doesn't make a lot of sense.
I don't disagree with you at all, you know, um, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all. It's just that I'm telling you that, that's kind of like somebody said, you know, sticking a gun to your head, but unfortunately, uh, that's, uh, uh, Mass DOT's funding requirement. So, uh, I'm, I'm telling you, you know, that, that's, you know, what they, Mass DOT wants.
True. Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Now, I understand you're the professional traffic engineer, and I just come from the school of common sense. And I wanted to, if, and I'm all ears, if you can provide me data to move the traffic quickly on Lowell Street, all right? Right now, Bottlesnecks, and I understand we talk about experience. I've got a little experience on Lowell Street. I own and operate a business there for over 30 years. I've lived on Lowell Street for eight years. And there's a bottleneck. I truly believe if you do the one-way on cross-street, you're going to create more of a bottleneck, because now they got to go to the Shell gas station to take that left. It's, it's, it's already a problem when you get two inches of snow, and it's backed up, talking Lowell Street beyond, right to I-93 past Lucys. We do this, and I hope I'm wrong, and I'm all ears, and sign me up if you can show to me that you can move that traffic. I find it highly unlikely it's going to happen, but I'm all ears, and I just think it's going to make a, a situation even worse. And once again, I'm listening to my colleagues here about, you know, the bicycle path and this and that. I mean, we lived in this town, you know, so I'm all ears. If we can move the traffic in a safe way, you know, but I'm going to give you the opportunity to prove that to me.
Yes, we, we would look at the, you know, uh, you know, cross-street, you know, effect of the change in a cross-street from two lanes to one lane, uh, what kind of effect it has at signalized intersection at the Lowell Street and Route 38. So we're going to do the analysis, and if, uh, that, you know, by changing it, uh, traffic pattern, if that change negatively affects the intersection, we would, you know, uh, come up with some kind of a mitigative measure so that, you know, intersection can still, you know, accommodate the changed traffic pattern.
Uh, you, Madam Chair, just a couple of comments and a couple of questions, uh, with respect to the timing. I know, Co, you, you'd like to be optimistic, uh, in terms of when this, yeah, may happen. I, I just, I don't certainly want to create any false expectations here. My sense is that, yeah, it's more likely to be at least in that 10-year timeline when you consider, uh, that the Glen Road project was initiated back in 2003 or '04, and we're still, don't have a date for, uh, you know, the, um, award of a contract there. Uh, but that being said, I think it's important to take these steps to get into queue, so to speak, so that we, uh, are able to make these longer-term improvements to Route 38. Um, one question, uh, in terms of the approach here, is, do you believe that it would be more advantageous, uh, in, in terms of ultimately getting funding if this project were pursued as one, one project going from the intersection at 38 and 62 to the Woburn Line versus dividing it up into a couple of projects? And, you know, certainly, the intersection at 38 and 62, uh, is, is a priority. Would it, would it make sense to try to pursue that sooner rather than pursuing the whole project as one project?
Uh, I can answer to that question. Uh, we, uh, talked to Mass DOT, some, get feedback of the, if this project can be approved for TIP or not. And we did talk, and we get some positive, you know, response from Mass DOT. Probably, this is a good project, candidate of the project to be approved for TIP funding. Uh, one things they, they did warn is, we probably need to limit the, uh, uh, amount of money we request to the Mass DOT to keep it less than $10 million. So, uh, we probably want to look at it, you know, how far we can do this, you know, project within the $10 million. So to answer your questions, probably phases, phasing is a good idea. And hopefully, uh, you know, we, we think probably we can, uh, do the Route 38 at least from the, this intersection we are talking about Burlington Avenue to, uh, you know, pass the cross-street to, at least to accommodate the proposed recreation area there. Uh, so we can install the sidewalk all, all the way there, then see how far we can go. But, uh, you know, if we can get at least endorsement of this entire project, actual, uh, application, we might do phasing, which means phase one, you know, from Route 62 to pass the cross-street, but not going all the way to Woburn, you know, city, city line. That, yeah.
Uh, just in terms of observation, I know Waterfield Design, who's the firm that's working with us at, on the Yentile property.
Yes.
Uh, their kind of conceptual design for the cross-street 38 intersection pulls out the, um, uh, the turn onto cross-street a bit, so I get...
This area here.
Yes.
Yes.
Right. We, we had looked at this, and, uh, we thought it would be beneficial to maintain this part of the intersection to allow vehicles from Butters Row to go directly across, rather than having to make a left and then slow down and make a quick right. Uh, that is certainly something that would have to be evaluated in a little bit more detail. And, uh, as we discussed previously, you know, this is still very conceptual and would need to be refined.
And, uh, my final question is really on the issue of how this conceptual design would enhance the safety of people trying to get out of Butters Row, either to cross, onto cross-street, or to take a right or left there. Because that's, I mean, the, the intersection is challenging whether you're coming from Butters Row or coming from cross-street right now.
That's, that's, that's correct. There's, uh, the biggest improvement to traffic coming from Butters Row would be removing the conflict of vehicles, uh, so that they're really only focused on vehicles driving on Main Street, and they don't have to worry, okay, is the person across the street from me on cross-street, are they going to turn? Do I have to wait? Do I have to yield? Are they going to go? Are they going to wait for me? It, it takes away that, that one decision point and that, and that area of conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
Yeah, I got one, one follow-up. Would endorsement of this process, a, a letter, I think you've asked, you're hoping that we'll, you'll come out of this meeting with a letter that we all sign. Um, that doesn't marry us to any of the schematics. I know you said this is very conceptual, so this will evolve and turn into something that would be more concrete, so to speak, later. So we're not, we're not endorsing that. We're endorsing a, a, a reflection that we want to engage in this process.
That's, that's correct. So basically, as part of the, uh, couple forms, we need to prepare and submit to, uh, you know, Mass DOT. They do want town is supporting this project. So, uh, that's what we are looking for. So I'm not asking you to, you know, because these plans are still very fluid. So as we coordinate and, uh, get more input from the, uh, you know, towns and stakeholders, this plan would change. So I'm not asking you to endorse this plan at this time.
Okay. This time, I'm going to open it up to the audience. Would anyone like to make a comment? Yes?
Representative Jim Maselli, and I've got a distinct comment. Uh, you keep talking about Lowell Street. One of the major problems in that area is on Burlington Avenue. And have you done any informal studies on traffic in that area? Have you done anything in that area?
Burlington Avenue intersection?
Yes, we, yeah.
What did you do?
Well, we collected traffic data at the Burlington Avenue intersection with Main Street, and we evaluated, uh, the traffic operations at the intersection during both the morning and afternoon peak hours. And the restriping that, that is included as part of this project, we feel not just improves the traffic on Main Street, but also significantly improves the Burlington Ave traffic there.
I live in that area. Started on the Transportation Committee for three years. Let me tell you, you haven't even addressed Burlington Avenue in your discussions. You've been talking about Lowell Street all night. Traffic at that intersection, if you even visually looked at what the traffic looks like as far as the cars are concerned, backs up all the way to Swing Road, and there are days when it backs up to the Burlington Line. You start toying with this without any thought, without any serious thought, and I'm going to follow this. I'm really interested in this project. I'm going to follow it. You start toying with this, and you're putting your emphasis on one street as opposed to the other, and you're not treating them on an equal basis, and it's not territorial. I'm just saying that. I challenge you to come out on a Friday, give me a call, and we'll start out at the Burlington Nine and find out how long it takes you to get to this intersection. Traffic is horrendous. And I come both ways. I've done Burlington Avenue, and I agree with something someone else said. And I'm not a naysayer. I'm a very progressive guy as far as moving this town along. I'll say this, that you start detouring traffic from cross-street. I'll say this, that you start detouring traffic from cross-street, I'm gonna watch and see how that's gonna work out, and you got a 10-year timetable. Once they sign that and make a commitment, they're committed to the design fee anyway, aren't they? That's your fee.
Not at this time.
Yeah, but within a short time.
If the town wants to pursue project further.
So really, I'm really interested to see how you handle this.
Yes. Well, quick comments on the Burlington Avenue. You know, Jason explained, basically what we are doing is, we, you know, by restriping, we practically actually increasing the number of lanes that can go through the intersection. So when you increase the number of lanes going through the intersection, that increases capacity, so, which means, you know, backup from Burlington, backup on Burlington Avenue can clear quicker. So it's, what we gonna do is nothing but, you know, positive on the capacity-wise, so we can reduce the queue on Burlington Avenue under this proposal.
Now, Madam Chairman, I didn't come here to discuss this, but I'm interested. That situation, given as it is, I thought you said there was no way to increase the lane capacity on Burlington Avenue.
That's not what I suggested. What we can't do is, and what we're not proposing to do, is widen the bridge over the railroad. But there are fairly wide shoulders that are out there today, and what we are proposing is, today the Burlington Ave approach to Main Street is two lanes. There's a right-turn-only lane and then a shared-through-left-turn lane, and we're proposing to restripe it to have an exclusive left-turn lane separate, as a separate lane from the through vehicles. In addition to providing that extra lane in just, in terms of roadway area and getting cars through the intersection, that also really allows us to change the phasing at the signal to operate more efficiently. Today Church Street and Burlington Ave go separately, so first Church Street goes, and then everyone stops, and then Burlington Ave goes, and that really takes a lot of time out of the whole cycle. And when we re-stripe Burlington Ave with the left-turn lane, we can then run the left turns from Church Street and Burlington Ave at the same time, and then run the two side streets at the same time. So in addition to the lane improvements, we're also making significant improvements to the traffic signal.
Yeah, we'll see how it works. Don't be a public notification when you're submitting it to TIP, right?
We work with the town, so it's, I guess it's up to the town if you wanna notify to the town folks. There are no requirements.
Well, given the nature, Madam Chair, given the nature of this project, certainly, I think we want to make it, make people well aware of what our plans are. This isn't gonna be something done in the dark of night.
And the TIP hearing will be part of that process, right?
I'll defer to, Co., is there a TIP hearing?
There is a, there is a TIP hearing every year, and, but that TIP hearing is really, you know, there's two different processes in there. Once, you wanna get in the TIP, but second process is, you need to get actual year when this project is being constructed, that's, they have every year to decide which project gonna be, you know, this year's TIP. So that, there is a public process there.
Yeah, I'll follow you.
Yeah.
Anything further?
Yeah. They mentioned on a couple of occasions Glen Road intersection. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I've been in contact, I got a letter from the town manager approximately two and a half weeks ago on behalf of the board, and heard from Mike Wood voicing your concerns about Glen Road. I took it upon myself to meet with Commissioner Secretary DePaolo on this issue, and he's the guy who's calling the shots right now, and I wasn't gonna say anything publicly because the next thing I know is it's gonna be in the newspaper, and every other town's gonna wanna do the same thing. When they go out to bid, I think you heard that earlier, when they go out to bid, and they're going through, they'll be going through a bidding process, there are always monies left over, and they consider this a small project. I said, oh, as far as we're concerned, it's a large project, small project, a million six, and they're gonna try to garner monies from that, kinda move this thing along more quickly. So that's where that stands right now, and I had spoken to, I asked him not to say anything, but came up tonight, and as I said, the manager sent me a letter on the board's behalf, so I've been busy with this situation, and I'll write her in on this to see if we can get this monies, which are long overdue.
Thank you for your efforts in that regard. Would anyone else like to make a comment? If you could please identify yourself for the record, please. Yes.
Kathleen Reynolds, Second Avenue Wilmington. I'm a proponent of bike paths, DOT funds or not, I ride my bike around Wilmington. Spandex, padded spandex, free though, I do wear a helmet. So this Main Street at Church Street intersection, I'm wondering if you're taking away the bike paths, now, bike paths that are there now. It's a very, very busy intersection, and a lot of people commute to the train station there on their bikes. It's one way to get from one end of town to the other, it's actually two ways, so I'm curious if those bike paths are gonna continue through this intersection based on what you showed us tonight.
Based on the concept design and trying to squeeze in the turning lanes, we would not have bike lanes through the intersection. This concept plan now shows the northbound bike lane ending about here shortly before it opens up into two lanes, although the southbound bike lane would start immediately south of the intersection.
And regarding the Yentau Farm property near that postory, I mean, just sitting here looking at all of this, if that's gonna be recreational field, it would make sense, or part of it's gonna be recreational, passive recreational, whatever it's gonna be, but, you know, it seems to be congruent with biking around Wilmington, and I would think that, you know, if it's 45 miles an hour on that stretch of Main Street, then perhaps that needs to be reduced so that it can accommodate bikers. I mean, biking is the way of the future as far as I'm concerned, and it's happening in a lot of communities, and it's the right way to get around town.
We've, I've talked with several different municipalities about reducing speed limits, and MassDOT has a very clear policy and with regard to speed limits, and basically, MassDOT's opinion and a lot of the supporting research is, people will drive at the speed that they're comfortable driving on the roadway regardless of what the actual posted speed limit is. And therefore, you know, if people are driving 45 miles an hour out there, MassDOT isn't just going to let everyone posted for 30, because people are, will continue to drive at 45 because that's what people feel comfortable with. So there's detailed speed studies that would need to be required if there was a desire to lower the speed limit in this area.
Thank you. I'm gonna try that next time I get stopped. That's what I was feeling comfortable driving at. Just wanted to add a little levity to the situation, but I'm obviously, anyone else? Okay. At this point, you're looking for action from the board this evening, correct?
Madam Chair, before you call a vote, I want to hear from the town manager, unless he needs to refer to the professionals here. By voting for this this evening, we're not committing, I mean, I have the answer, but I want to make sure, we're not committing to this project by voting, once we support it this evening, is it off and running?
The expectation is that you're committing to pursue improvements in the 38 corridor, addressing the intersection at 38 and 62. As Co. and Jason have suggested, this is very conceptual, so you're not committing to this particular design, but it allows us to move further down the road, if you will, to developing something more specific.
And if I just touch upon that, so if we move further down the road, and I say, geez, I don't really, I never liked it from the get-go, and I really even believe it's worse now, and if I don't vote, I mean, I'm only one member, but if the board wanted majority vote to pull out of it, could we pull out of it?
I think at this point, all we really trying to do is, we're trying to put in a TIP funding, so if we, so if we get in a TIP funding, at that point, I think we can, you can decide if you want to move further or not, I guess.
But, Co., it may be helpful if you can perhaps describe the opportunities that will be available for the board and the public to weigh in on the design. I think there's, the sense I have is a measure of concern that by endorsing the idea of making improvements to this area, that the board is committing the town to a particular approach. My expectation is that over the course of time here, that there will be various points where a design will be presented at various phases, and the board and the town will have an opportunity to offer comment.
Right, that's absolutely correct, Jeff, town manager. We have gone a lot of steps for this job, and we would, you know, come in front of this board to get approval for, as a project progress. So this is mayor, you know, first step, try to get the project approved for TIP, and if the project's probably not approved for a TIP, you know, town probably doesn't have $10 million, so this project wouldn't go any further, so all the discussion, you know, what's happened on this detail of the design, that's not, even not gonna be issue. So we're trying to get the TIP approval at this point, and once we get TIP approved for Mass DOT, we can discuss again if the town really wants to, you know, proceed further with the project, and if you decided to do that, we need approval for 25% design, you know, further down the line, and there's a lot of steps, and we will be in front of that board to request that, you know, approval for each step.
So by doing this letter, we're not committing to the design portion of this project at this point?
No, we really trying to, what we are trying to do is, if we can get approval from Mass DOT to commit the construction money, so other than that, you know, we are not asking anything more at this point. Because if it's approved, it doesn't mean you need to do it.
Say that again, please, what?
But if you, even project is approved for a TIP, that doesn't mean you have no obligation to do the project.
I'm gonna speak ahead of time, I'm gonna support this very cautiously, I'm just gonna give you the opportunity to pursue it, but I'll tell you, I think at the end of the day, this is gonna be the worst thing the town of Wilmington's ever seen. That's my opinion, that's what I'm gonna say, 'cause I've seen other stuff going on in this town, that, you know, that had been positive, some things have been negative, but I hope you prove me wrong.
Would anyone like to make a motion at this time?
I'll offer a motion that the board of selectmen support the submission of a package for the purposes of getting on the TIP list for a project running on Route 38 from Route 62 to the Woburn City Line.
Second.
Which has been made and seconded. Anything further? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just give a few minutes for the room to turn over. Okay. At this time, I'd like to move on to our next appointment with Kathleen Black Reynolds, Chairman of the Historical Commission regarding the discussion of the Whitfield School and Butter's Farm. I first would like to apologize for the significant delay in the schedule. Thank you very much for your patience in working through this.
No problem.
So at this point, I'd like to turn the floor over to you as the chair. We've had some pre-meeting discussions as to some of the topics that would be part of this evening, so I'd like to have you use the time as you see fit, and at that point, when you've concluded your presentation, I will turn it over to the board to ask any remaining questions, as well as the manager, and then I'll also offer the public to ask you any questions as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to recognize members of the Historical Commission, Diane Harvey, Bob Mallett, Steve Lawrence, former chair of the Historical Commission for 25-something years, and honorary chair emeritus, Carolyn Harris, Representative Jim Maselli, who's not a member, but he's here, I'd like to recognize his presence, and our phenomenal curator, Terry McDermott. First, I just, I feel like I need to clear the air, I feel, and I've had some comments from citizens and other folks in the community, town employees included, who have approached me and suggested that there's some contentious relationship between the board of selectmen and the Historical Commission, and I just want to put it out there that that is not our intention at all. Our history is, reflects that we have a very collaborative, cooperative effort with the board of selectmen and other town entities, and if there's any animosity on the part of the commission or the board, I just, I just want it to be done and over with. I don't want that to be the flavor that the community gets from us, because it's just not at all what we intend, and I think in order to move this community forward and to do what's best for this town, we need to work together, and we can't do that if we're taking things personally or feeling that there's some kind of animosity, so I just want to clear the air and put that out there. I did receive some feedback from some of the members of the board that I was able to speak with, and I'd like to draw, I also believe that the town manager distributed some information that I had emailed to him regarding specifically the Butter's Farm House, but with respect to some of the specific questions that I received from some of the board members, I would just draw your attention to, I believe it was a memorandum written by the town manager and perhaps even the assistant town manager regarding what the updates were regarding the Whitfield School in particular, and it's my understanding that you've been made aware that the town manager intends to solicit an RFP for selling parts of the Whitfield School, and intends to work obviously directly with the Historical Commission, and that the timeframe for that is to have the RFP out by the end of July, early August, and have response due by September, assuming that that's everybody's understanding regarding the Whitfield School. What the Historical Commission is doing at this point, and we have been fairly active, we have been searching for planning grants, there's a number of... us, be more than willing, obviously, to listen to what those are because that helps us assess what types of grants are available. We have also been in touch with some of the local universities that have architectural programs, and we've done this in the past. We did this with the Butters Farm House. We had a couple of experts come out from local universities. It didn't cost us anything. They just came out and gave us their expert opinion on the Butters Farm House initially. But we've had some interest in the Whitfield School as well. We could have some architectural students come out and have their instructors come out as well and just give us a sense of what the overall structure of the building is, its condition, and possible uses of it. And that wouldn't cost the town anything to do that. And we'll continue to look for grant and funding opportunities and we will suggest some reuses. We think we're pretty early in this game, but we've been pretty busy, we think. So, what we intend to do by December, and I know that sounds like a long way out, but it will be here before you know it, we're already almost halfway through the year. And of course, I'm more than happy to meet with you on a monthly basis if you'd like or more frequently. We'll have a report by the end of the year that includes any plans, assessments, drawings that have been completed, any funding opportunities that are available, suggested alternate uses for the building, and I guess a statement on the realistic condition and future possibilities of the building. So, overall, you know, if the town's intention is to just take this building down, that's fine. We're still going to make our recommendations. But I think, like most things in life, it comes down to the bottom line. And if we can find sources that allow the building to be reused, because we don't believe that the building has served its complete purpose, we think the building is reusable, and we can do that at a cost that is less than demolishing the building and building something new, then I think it's worth considering. And I think, and I'm hoping that the board will keep an open mind and consider those possibilities. I understand, based on the Town Manager's annual or budget memo, that there's a lot of taxpayers who aren't happy with their current tax bills based on the new high school, but, and aren't looking forward to supporting the construction of a new building anytime soon. So, we have a wonderful building that could be reused, that hasn't outlived its purpose, and if we can rehabilitate it, reinvigorate it, then I think we should consider that and our report will certainly make those kinds of suggestions. So, that's our position on the Whitfield School. Regarding the Butters Farm House, you got, I think, I would think, a wealth of information. You received a timeline of the property, essentially what's happened since 2005, when we learned that the building was at risk of being sold and/or demolished. And you also received the costs to the town and the acquisition of funds that were obtained by the town on behalf of the Butters Farm House. So, as you can see, in 2005, the Commission was made aware of the impending sale property, the Butters Farm House property was listed as the 10 most, one of the 10 most endangered historic properties. The Commission began its campaign to raise funds. We acquired $70,000 from Mass Historic Commission to put towards the purchase of the Butters Farm House. Wilmington Town Meeting in 2006 overwhelmingly supported the purchase of the Butters Farm House. And then also that same year, Representative Maselli and Senator Bouschard secured funds from the state legislature for $450,000 to purchase the Butters Farm House. I think there's a misconception in the community, and I have spoken with many people, two of them who are Butters descendants, I think there's this misconception that there are two buckets of $450,000. One that the town meeting appropriated and one that we received from the state. And in essence, we all know there's only one bucket of $450,000 and that went to the purchase. So, many people have asked me, "Well, wait a minute. We have $450,000 to, you know, complete the project." And we don't. That $450,000 was gone before really the ink even dried. So, if the town wants to, if the board wants to elaborate on how that happens, I think people would be interested in hearing how that happened. Immediately, the Historical Commission began to get the Butters Farm House listed on the National Register of Historic Places. What the listing on the Historic, what the listing on the National Register does is it augments the historical significance of the property. It doesn't prevent, it doesn't prevent the building from coming down. It just essentially augments the significance of the property. Unfortunately, in this particular case, it took a few years to get it on the National Register. That's not typical. It generally doesn't take four years, but in this particular case, it did. I will say too, that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts keeps its own inventory of historic places, structures, et cetera, and the Butters Farm obviously is included on that. But in order to include it on the National Register, the Commonwealth actually had to alter its criteria for first-period houses so that this property could be included. It's a pretty significant piece of property. We have two first-period houses in Wilmington, and not many communities can say they have even one. And we have two of them. It makes Wilmington quite unique. And from that point on, we continued to work with the grant funding, hired some consultants and architects, continued to just get the projects done. And obviously, you understand that when state funds are involved, I mean, you just heard the presentation prior to ours, they're talking about a 10-year project. You know, this project here, although it seems to have taken a long time, I think it fails in comparison to what the Department of Transportation is projecting for road changes. So, that's essentially where we are with the timeline. That's to 2010. A couple of updates that aren't on your sheet are just the subsequent phases of the project. Currently, the Historical Commission feels that it has exhausted all of its resources, both grants, municipal funds, private funds, and we just have nowhere else to go. As some of you may have seen, the interior needs to be completely rehabbed. Much of the historical features, if not all of them, have been preserved. There are some that still need some work, but we feel we've exhausted all our resources. And having gone through the process of the Richardson Estate, which as some of you may know, the town was supposed to acquire that piece of property through a donation by Winifred Richardson, who wanted to donate her home and five acres of property to the town. And the executive of her estate, after she passed away, excuse me, decided that the town wasn't the best recipient of the property. He subsequently sold it to Historic New England, who then put it in its curator program. And it's been a wonderful relationship. It was a very smooth process. And through that example, we think that that's the best route for the Butters Farm to take. When I met with the Realtor that helped with the Richardson Estate, we met at the Butters Farm House along with Historic New England, he assured me that there's a buyer for the first-period house out there. He specializes in this period of homes, and he's quite certain that there's a buyer for the property. So, we're pretty excited about that. But he also had asked me at the time if there was a mechanism to transfer the authority to convey the property so that it's not in the hands of the towns to do that and sort of speed things along. So, it would be like a private sale. And I've spoken to Mr. Hall and Ms. Amal about that, and there is no mechanism. So, the town has to remain or retain ownership of it, and then we'll be able to convey it to an owner. So, therefore, we have to go through the surplus process, the town meeting process, and the RFP process. So, I'll leave that to Jeff to explain. So, that's where we are with the Butters Farm House. Again, we think we've exhausted all resources there. I don't, you know, the town's not interested or can't afford to obviously rehab it. It will cost quite a lot of money to do that. We actually brought Habitat for Humanity in to take a look at it. We thought that would be a nice project for Habitat for Humanity to come in and buy the property and then mortgage it out to a homeowner and they do the sweat equity and get it done. But it was just above and beyond their means, so they couldn't do it. And that's about where we are with the Butters Farm. I don't know if that covers everything, or if you have any questions, or if I haven't covered anything, you'll let me know and be happy to answer what I can.
Okay, we'll open it to the board for questions. Start over, am I right?
Thank you for that. In terms of the Butters Farm, first of all, I would agree with apparently the Commission in terms of the next, the best next step would be to take whatever steps we need to impose restrictions. And I know that Mr. Hall has given us a memorandum, and so some of my understanding is from that, some of it is from the presentation that you just made. But from my perspective, and I made similar comments at the time that Mrs. Harris was in, kind of on that last step with the Richardson Estate. And that comment is that for certain projects, certain structures, and I certainly think this is one of them, the Richardson Estate was one of them, it just makes more sense for the town to, you know, have the benefit of the restrictions to preserve the historical significance of the property, but allow somebody else to incur the responsibility and the cost associated with refurbishing that particular structure. So, I, you know, and I remember some folks being, you know, disappointed at the idea that we had gotten the restrictions with the Richardson property. Then she passed away, and then the trustee opted to go the route that you described. But frankly, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't all that disappointed about that. The fact of the matter is that the property was preserved. It was preserved on somebody else's dime, and the town continues to, you know, to have the ability to make sure that that happens, that it continues to be preserved. So, to me, that's what ought to be the result of the Butters Farm House. In terms of your budget here, there are Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the construction that's been done to this point. And I think that your, the timeline that you outlined ended in June of 2010. Can you help me get a perspective on how that timeline continues with the construction, both in terms of the Phase 1 and the Phase 2? And so, understanding that the last, that the last source of revenue was in 2010, how did that play out contractually to where we're at now? When was the construction that's been completed, completed on the ground out there? Was it 2012? Does that sound about right?
Terry McDermott? Can I work with the Historical Commission? Yes, when we put the timeline together that you saw in 2010, we had just finished Phase 1, I believe. At that, later on in 2010, we got additional money, $8,000, from Mass Historical to continue work at the house. And at that time, and that was, I saw my matching grant. So, that was to allow us to create a project that would cost at least $16,000 because it has to, it's a matching grant. We worked with the architects, mentors, Tori, to come up with different ways we could utilize that. And it was decided to complete the exterior of the house, basically, to make sure that it wasn't an eyesore and because it needed the sheathing, the outer. When Phase 1 was done in 2010, only one facade of the building was finished. There were new windows in it, and there was new clavering and whatnot. So, the next phase, which the Historical Commission had $8,000 from grant, there was also some money still in, from fundraising left over in the Historical Commission's coffers. I think the town came up with about $30,000 more to complete the second phase, which was the entire exterior except for the roof and chimney. All the windows were replaced, doors were put on, and then ultimately, the building was painted. And all that was finished, I believe, in 2012. We did the final painting, I think, in 2013 because most of the project was done in 2012, but it became winter and we couldn't paint. So, then the painting was finished in 2013 and we went over the punch list. So, that was pretty much when it was done.
And the two contractors who've worked on that, O'Doherty and then Caruso and McGovern, they don't have the same principles, right? Those were separate procurements or separate contracts?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yep.
That was my recollection. Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I'm glad we had an opportunity to speak. I know you reached out to me, and if there was any major concerns, that if there's anything, we could reach out and talk about it. And I said to you then, and I say to you publicly, that there's really no bags of tricks that we have right here. I can say that with all honesty. And I totally agree what you want to do with the Butters Grove Farm to basically repeat what happened off the property on Woburn Street. That's a great idea. Now, I remember taking a tour of the Butters Farm several years ago. I was a little heavy. I thought I was going to go through that floor, to be totally honest with you. But luckily, that didn't happen. So, anyway, and as far as the Whitfield School site, I mean, you know, I accept the decision of the town meeting. I don't agree with it, but I accept it and I will respect it and I'll honor it and hopefully give you a year to maybe come up with something. And at the end of the day, we'll just take a look at the whole project. So, once again, I'm all ears, and I know, you know, everybody here and everybody there, you know, we try to do what we can for our community and volunteer our time and try to make it a better place to live. And like I said, I'm all ears, and hopefully, something does happen to it, you know, and, you know, I just disagree on some of the comments about the, say, the structure of the Whitfield School. And once again, I just really hope that, you know, you do put something together and maybe somebody privately will do something with it. But if not, you know, we need to take a look at the future of the community, you know. I'm here and I'm all ears.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, well, thank you for the presentation and for coming tonight. From my perspective, and I've made this statement, I guess, a couple of times over the course of the last several months, I like to gather as much information as possible on issues before formulating an opinion. And I view you as the subject matter experts, such as it is, with regards to whether or not a building is historically significant, and if it is deemed as such, what can be done with it? Is it worth saving? If it's worth saving, where does the money come from? All those kind of things. So, you know, inasmuch as I depend on Jeff Hall an awful lot to advise us at the Board of Selectmen on a host of different issues, I also depend on my colleagues who've been on this board for longer than I, who are involved in some of these discussions from the early onset of them, especially with regards to Butters Farm, and I'll get to that in a second. But on the Whitfield issue, and really on everything, you started, Kathleen, by talking about open communication. I think that's really, if we can establish, regardless of whether we had it ever before or didn't, if we can just sort of all uniformly establish that we have open communication from this day forward, both ways. If there's questions, if there's concerns, if there's a lack of information or a lack of communication, or perceived lack of communication, let's put it that way, let's flush that out, clear that stuff up so that we are all moving in the same direction. Even if it means, and you know, when we talk about moving in the same direction, we have to agree sometimes to disagree. We're not always going to be, we may not come to the same conclusion, but if we're having open dialogue about it, then we can formulate our opinions. So, for me personally, I depend on your knowledge, your expertise, but I also don't want to hear knee-jerk reactions from the Historical Commission that say, "And a building is old, therefore we have to do what we can to save it." And so, that's why, and we've had some candid conversations, and I've said this publicly and in private conversations with you, that any presentation that you make to us, the Board of Selectmen, or to the town about the preservation of the Whitfield School ought to be really, really impressive because I think I share my colleague's opinion about that building, that it, at least from my perspective, doesn't rise to the level of being worthy of the investment time, energy of preservation. However, I didn't feel
I think that's really, if we can establish, regardless of whether we had it ever before or didn't, if we can just sort of all uniformly establish that we have open communication from this day forward, both ways. If there's questions, if there's concerns, if there's a lack of information, or a lack of communication, or perceived lack of communication, let's put it that way, let's flush that out, clear that stuff up, so that we are all moving in the same direction. Even if it means, and you know, when we talk about moving in the same direction, we have to agree sometimes to disagree. We're not always going to be, we may not come to the same conclusion, but if we're having open dialogue about it, then we can formulate our opinions. So, for me personally, I depend on your knowledge, your expertise, but I also don't want to hear knee-jerk reactions from the Historical Commission that say, "And a building is old, therefore we have to do what we can to save it." And so, that's why, and we've had some candid conversations, and I've said this publicly and in private conversations with you, that any presentation that you make to us, the Board of Selectmen, or to the town, about the preservation of the Whitfield School ought to be really, really impressive, because I think I share my colleague's opinion about that building, that it, at least from my perspective, doesn't rise to the level of being worthy of the investment time, energy of preservation. However, I didn't feel like I had a substantive presentation of your opinions on that matter at the time that I had to make that decision. So, I'm anxious to hear that, I guess, substantive case, so to speak. On Butters, I will agree that the historic New England path seems to make great sense. I'll ask you, or my colleagues here, I'm embarrassed to admit that, as I came into this board more than halfway after the transaction had been approved by the Board of Selectmen before I was on it. So, I don't remember, from my history, as to what the intention of the building was. When the town agreed, yes, let's go forward and purchase this building with state legislative funding, what were we going to do with it? Because by and large, you know, the work that you highlighted for us, while impressive, has resulted in an empty building. And I always wondered, is it a museum? Is it supposed to be used for some esoteric purpose that I never fully understood? So the idea of a private owner coming in and actually physically using the property is very appealing to me. So I don't know, Jeff, if you want to talk to that, or Mike, I know you were involved, or Mike, I don't know, or you. I don't know who to direct the question.
Well, my recollection is that there was a general belief that it would be put to an active use again, and presumably as a habitable home.
So the town was going to own it, fix it up, and potentially sell it?
I think that comment was made on a number of occasions.
Okay, interesting. So this gets us ultimately to that end goal, if going through the historic New England pathway, it seems. If that goes well, I don't know, I'm just glad to hear that that's the direction that we're going, and I'll be anxious to hear more about that. Let's see, other little bullets that I had. You know, and here's another thing that I don't have, and maybe it exists out there, if there's a website or something, does the Historical Commission have like a mission statement or a purpose for, I'd be interested to read that, just so that I know what you, how you approach your jobs? Because I know how I view you, but I'd be interested to maybe see how you guys view you, and make sure that we're all on the same page. So that ultimately, I know what you expect of us, and I want you to know what we can expect of you. Last thing, I'll just, I'll close off by saying, you know, going forward, I imagine that you've probably already anticipated it, but the next conversations that we're going to start having, I don't know when. I imagine it's probably going to start coming up soon. We haven't had any conversation at this board level, but I imagine the Roman House will be a prominent discussion topic over the course of the next year. So, you know, to the extent that you felt perhaps that there was not ample time to do whatever homework you wanted to do for Whitfield, I hope that you're availing yourself of whatever time you have to do your homework on Roman. So, I will just lob that stuff on the table. I guess I didn't have questions, I had a lot of statements, didn't I? So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any follow-up to any of that?
Sure, I can, I can't recite our mission, word for word, but I can tell you that our goal is to preserve our historic resources, is to conserve our historic resources, and is to educate the community as to what they are. And when we talk about preservation, I mean, take a look around this room, there's a lot of architectural, historical preservation, you know, memorabilia and suggestions as you look around. It's pretty amazing, Mill Stacks Canal, these are from Mass Historical Commission, these posters over here. So, and I explain this to the commission, and it's part of our minutes, so it's open, it's out there to the public. You know, we're not urban planners, but we have a building that's historically significant, it's 100-plus years old. It's a statement to our community that we value education, because it's a school. It's unique, because it's a wooden structure. It's the only early 20th century remaining wooden structure, wooden school that we have in the community. We've lost a couple of schools in the community. It's a way to connect our current community to the past. It's a sound building, and whether it's preserved for its historical features, or whether it's preserved because we can put it to use and save the community millions of dollars, I think that's the question. So, can we save it because it's historically significant? Absolutely, there's spending out there to do that. Should we save it for those reasons? Why not? Should we save it because it can save the town a lot of money, versus tearing it down, building something new, as the taxpayers expend? Why do that when we can get grant money? Because it's still in the hands of the school department, and correct me if I'm wrong, there might be school funds out there, there might be library funds out there, if we choose to put a library there, there might be elder services funds, if we choose to put a senior citizen center there, there could be municipal funds, there could be preservation funds. I mean, there's, and not only that, but there's many civic organizations, nonprofit organizations in this town, that might have use for that building. They might be able to get their own grant funds, that don't require matching funds. So there's a lot of potential donors for this building, and to rehab it and to revitalize it. There's also private development, and there is tax incentives for private development, and I know the town's not interested in renting the building or leasing the building, but perhaps there's some kind of, I don't know, arrangement where the town sells it for 10 years, and it collects taxes for private use, and the private developer comes in and rehabs it, and gets a 20% tax credit for doing so, and yet, the seniors can use the property in the back for a bocce field, and then the town gets to buy it back in 10 years, or gets to get it back in 10 years. You know, I think there's just so many possibilities, and we're grateful that we have the time to explore them, and we're going to present them to you, and I know you, all of you, well, almost all of you have said you'll keep an open mind, and you're all ears and whatnot, and we're grateful for that. And I look forward to the challenge, and I look forward to the opportunity to show you that what can be done. We have the West Schoolhouse as an example, we have the Butters Farmhouse as an example, we have the Richardson Estate as an example, we have the Haunted Tavern as an example. You know, we have a great track record in this community, I've said that plenty of times before. The Roman House, very similar situation. I've already spoken to George Cooper about that, I know he's in, looking for funds for a roof. If we can get a planning grant for that, or just have an expert come out, and we can use our professional services budget for that, you know, maybe there's some grant funding for that as well. And one of the lessons that we've learned from this whole Whitfield School process is, we need to be communicating a whole lot more with public buildings, and with the departments that are in these historic buildings that are town-owned, because if they have structural needs, and there's preservation funds, let's get them. You know, why rely on the town only for these funds? Let's get them, and let's keep our buildings fit. And that's the feedback I have regarding your comments.
I just had a couple of questions, if I may. Looking at the Butters, obviously, I'm in favor of seeing about selling the property. I was not part of the board for this project as well, but I'm just trying to seek to understand for the two phases that you have, and I don't know how this works, and I haven't asked this question, is that, you know, when you have funding, so $93,000 and change, $69,806, who makes the decision as to how the money is spent? So, I'm not a contractor, so how do you, who decides, you know, does the building need a roof, or should the building have been raised and put on a foundation? I'm just trying to seek to understand how those decisions were made.
I'm going to definitely defer.
Well, most of these, both of these phases were funded, at least in part, through Mass Historical Commission. And when you go to Mass Historical Commission for funding, you have to have a pretty specific plan already in place anyway, and say, so we, the first step was actually, we hired an architect with the town, we interviewed several different architects, and came up with the most qualified architect in historic preservation. And they studied the building, and they came up, when Mass Historical, usually on an annual basis, depending on what funding is, they will announce grant rounds, you know, and the deadline changes all the time. But when we knew that there was a grant deadline coming up, we worked with our architect, and they came up with a list of priority items, and then you submit it to Mass Historical, and they approve, give you, so the work that's done is definitely, you're not giving the money, you've already told them what you're going to do.
Okay. So who helps you make that plan?
The architects. The architects working with, I mean, the commission obviously worked with them and reviewed it, but I would say that we trusted the architect's judgment on that sort of thing. And in fact, I mean, on the second phase of the construction, there had been some talk about doing the interior from the architect, because that is, as you all saw, the interior needs to work as well. But the Historical Commission's input at that time was, if we're applying for grant money, we, I think, and working with the town as well, thought that it was very important that the exterior be done. It protects the building as well as, it protects the appearance as well as the building itself. So on the second, so there was definitely some back and forth, but the architects, I mean, they are the experts on the actual construction and whatnot, and they're the ones who devised the construction plans, and the papers that went out to bit, and all that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Along those lines, one of the things that, and I fully appreciate the fact that the town relies on architects, that we pay to not only produce plans for what needs to be done, but to supervise and oversee the construction on behalf of the town. And given that, and I'm not being critical of anybody in this room, but I really don't understand why the exterior sheathing and the shell is, you know, new wood is put on, and it's stained and painted, and the windows are done, and yet, the roof isn't done. I mean, I don't understand that sequencing. Was that something that was specifically explained during that design process?
At the time that the house was analyzed, although the roof, you're right, the roof, we know, the roof needs work, but at the time, the sheathing and whatnot, it was in really, really rough shape. And that, we had actually asked Mass Historical for more money than we got, and that would have been the next thing to do. But, yes, you're right, I mean, the roof, the roof needs help, but the exterior sheathing was in rough shape, and especially, in a house like that, as you can imagine, once you start one thing, it's like unpeeling the onion, you find more things and whatnot. But, once they did one side, which, you know, we did one facade in the first phase, it became obvious that there were parts of the outside, they just had to be shored up, they just had to be shored up. They were, there was a lot of deterioration, a lot of rot. The roof, at the time, I mean, I think it's in great shape now, at the time, I think there'd been some temporary repairs made to the roof, and it just, even though it doesn't look great, it was not deemed to be the most critical thing at that time.
Good, yeah, and I just, again, you look at the cost of doing this kind of work, and in round numbers, I think you're looking at roughly $162,000 to $163,000 in construction alone. And, you know, when you're talking that kind of money to produce the end product, well, not be the end product, but to produce the product at which it exists today, to me, speaks to how expensive it is to refurbish older structures like this. I mean, you're, it, I mean, it's, you know, it, new construction, a house can be built, you know, in, including excavation work, site work, you know, typical site, for $100, $105 bucks a foot, you know, start to finish. And I just think that we need to recognize that when we take on contracts like this, and projects like this, that cost is, is just, it blows that out of the water. It's just not even in the same, not even in the same league. So, you know, it's not a criticism of the contractors, it's not a criticism of the Historical Commission. As far as I know, it's not a criticism of the architects, although I, you know, I wonder about some of the sequencing, but the reality is, for over $160,000 in contract money, what's there is what we have. And I, I mean, again, I don't claim to be, you know, an expert in construction, and particularly in this kind of construction, but if, you know, over $160,000 is the work that has accomplished the project to this point, you know, the prospective buyer is going to have to put in significant amounts of money to bring the interior of that back to life. So, and I think that's, the memo that the manager gave us in our package speaks to that, and what our expectations ought to be, but I think that's worth noting, you know, we understand what it's going to take, at least some sense of the order of magnitude, and, you know, that's why it makes sense to impose restrictions on it, and let somebody else, you know, incur that burden, so.
If you're interested in the detail that was done, we have fabulous display of what was done there. And that building is, as you know, it's over 300 years old, and it's going to last another 300 years old, and I would suggest that it's probably going to last longer than some of new construction today. When I tell you it has been shored up, Mr. Newhouse, this foundation has been, it's, the work they did there is absolutely amazing, and this building's not going anywhere, it's going to outlive so many generations. And I understand that you're not taking, I'm not, you're not criticizing, but when you're talking about a first-period house versus a 21st century house, you're talking apples to oranges. The work that was done there, again, if you want to see the detail, we've got that for you, and we've got it for the public as well. It's pretty amazing what they did and what they had to do. Initially, when the property was almost on the market, one of the proposals was to move the property to where the Baldwin Apple Monument is, to that small lot there, the building wouldn't have survived, it just wouldn't have survived. The sheathing and the construction itself was just so far gone, and it just wouldn't have survived. So, we're so fortunate to have saved it in its location, and to have the work done that was done. And you're right, the homeowner, the new homeowner, is going to have their work cut out for them, but the homeowner is going to be somebody passionate about a first-period house, and they're going to be willing to do it. You referenced Mr. Hall's memo, I noticed in the memo, and I know we talked about this when we met with Historic New England, and we talked about sort of giving up an incentive to the buyer to give them some of the purchase price back, so that the roof and the chimney could be repaired and completed. I noticed that that wasn't in your memo, and I didn't know if that was something that you were considering as part of the RFP. I know you talked about, I know you had referenced in your memo that, and I'm assuming the memo that Ms. Newhouse referred to was the same memo that I received, but it discusses trying to get back the endowment, not get back, but the endowment that Historic New England suggested would work for them would be somewhere between $45,000 and $50,000, and that the town would try to recoup some of its investment, but there wasn't any mention of sort of the buyback incentive to give money to the buyer for the roof and the chimney.
That is, I think, part of the expectation here. Again, it's, you know, I think the, to the extent that the town is able to sell the property, my expectation is that the priority should be on creating a situation where a buyer can come in and be attracted to purchase this property, and to some measure anyways, have some seed money, if you will, to make some of the investment that's going to be needed there.
Thank you.
So, just to continue on with the questions that I had had, moving on to the Whitfield School, you had talked about having a developer in to give you some information, is there any formal proposal that the developer had provided to you that could be shared, and did the developer indicate any sort of cost of what they thought it would take to?
No, no. Short answer is no, nothing formal. When he walked through the building with us, he said, "Yeah, I could envision, you know, some private use here, some medical space of fitness or yoga loft." Help me, what were some of the others? Residential housing, like condos, there were two others, there were five total, and Bonnie Smith's not here, I had to refresh my memory, because she had written them down. So he had some private uses for it. And again, he was talking more about just the building, he didn't reference the space out back. He said, "Obviously, if a developer would come in, they would buy the building, and enough space for parking spaces." He was aware that there's no septic there, so obviously, that would be a huge cost. But I think there's probably some kind of arrangement where private development uses the building, and parking spaces puts in a septic system, and then the space behind the building gets to be used by the public, for whatever reason. I think any suggestion and recommendation that we make is going to require zoning changes, because right now, right now, it's zoned as residential, and there is one, I think, portion of the property that's zoned commercial. So any recommendations that we make are going to require a zoning change, and obviously, that's something the board would have to consider, if they're going to move forward with it, with any of our recommendations. You know, we understand that the town is interested in preserving the space for some long-term municipal use. I don't know if the board knows what those uses are, and if you're willing to enlighten us, that would be helpful, so when we do pursue some of these potential us, that would be helpful, so when we do pursue some of these potential donors, we have an idea of what we're asking for and why we're asking for it. But, you know, that's, that's what he told us. It definitely has a lot of potential, a lot of capability, and it's in sound structural form.
Okay. Let's tell the other man.
Just to maybe comment, in terms of future use, if you recall, one of the things I had recommended in my budget presentation was that the town go through a feasibility evaluation of the various town spaces, buildings, and essentially establish a, what I would consider a long-term plan for municipal property, and, you know, identify priorities and sequencing. That was, was, didn't ultimately make it in terms of going to the town meeting floor, but I would continue, my expectation is to make a similar recommendation next year. So, the short answer is I don't have a particular use that I would suggest for that property at the moment, but clearly there are a number of different potential uses. As I've previously mentioned, I think at, at some point in the future, the town would be well-served to have a municipal, town hall slash school admin facility. I think there's a lot of, it makes sense to have those two operations in one place. I think, you know, at some point in time, we ought to relook at the prospect of a library. The senior center is another area that, you know, it's a very, it's a high level of use, and the space constraints there are, are an issue that we have to deal with. So, there's a number of different issues that, that we need to look at. The question becomes prioritizing it and sequencing it. But that, it's really for that, for that reason that I am, would be very reluctant to recommend relinquishing that property for private development.
Anything further from the board? Okay, at this time, we're going to open it up to the public, any comments?
Yeah, Representative Jim Sully, just one comment, I thought Kathy got it straight, so that everyone understands, I'm not preaching to the choir, I'm talking about the public, because I've had calls too. There were not two parts, the town fronted 450,000 to purchase that property, with the understanding that I would make an attempt, and that was discussed publicly, an attempt to insert 450,000 in the state budget to reimburse the town. That's strictly what it was. We appropriated 450,000 to reimburse the town for the 450,000 that they had fronted at town meeting, period. One part of 450 grand, nothing else. See, I'm making light of it. It's a lot of money, but, and it's not an easy thing to do. But, we got the 450,000 in the house budget, and carried through, and signed by the governor, and town got their check, and that was a deal that was made at the town meeting publicly, and that's what exists. It's gone.
Harry Dunn, any closing comments?
Yeah, well, I have two questions and a request. So, the, the RFP that you're developing for either the purchase of the Whitfield or purchase of portions of the Whitfield, correct? Are you just doing one, or are you doing two?
The, we're going to try to make it one RFP. One of the issues that we need to address is that the building itself, based upon the town council's opinion, you know, the, the initial expectation was that under public procurement law, we might be able to go through a process similar to selling other town property vehicles and other things, where it's a straight request for proposal or invitation for bid. Town council believes, based upon the statutes, that the property, the building itself essentially is part of the property, so that we would have to go through, with the building, the same process that we would if we were to dispose of the land, that, you know, you go through the, deeming it surplus, or raising the issue of whether it is surplus, the property review committee would have to weigh in, make a recommendation as to whether the property was surplus, and then I would then determine whether, in fact, that the building was surplus, and then it would go to town meeting. So, that changes the game plan a bit.
Okay, and so, if, if somebody comes along and says, "We want to buy portions of the Whitfield School before we've completed our task," what happens?
If someone is, is looking to buy elements of the building?
Correct. Like these special shingles.
The door, the door, yes, the door.
But, it just seems, you know, we're trying to do a job, but if somebody comes along, will there be some kind of mechanism for the town to say, "Okay, well, the commission's doing their thing, can we wait until January 1st," or?
Yeah, I would certainly want to have a conversation with the commission, you know, if, if something, someone comes forward and is looking to buy elements of the building, I'd want to get input from the commission as to what your opinion of the sale of those pieces might be.
Great, thank you. And then, my, my second question slash closing comment is, is kind of intertwined. So, as, you know, you've appointed Mr. Shump, who is the liaison to the commission, and I've never spoken in front since we had a liaison appointed to the commission. I know liaison, such a fancy word for me. We didn't get the, we, the commission met a week ago Monday, that was, was it last week? Two weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago, and then Mr. Shump and I had a conversation maybe the following night, but it wasn't until about 9:30 at night. So, it's, as you know, you meet the same night that we meet, it's pretty challenging for him to come to our meetings. As I said at the very beginning, we're wide open, we're very transparent, our meetings are public, our minutes are published, our agenda is published. I don't see the need for a liaison, and I'm just curious whether other boards and commissions have a liaison with the Board of Selectmen, and if they don't, could we not have one? Because I feel like we're on supervised provision.
It is good by.
Not necessarily by, just decommissioned or approved?
We do have, to answer that question, we do have liaisons. So, for example, the Antioch Development Committee, which was developed from this Board of Selectmen, and specifically a previous chairman, we do have a liaison on that committee, specifically with Textron, who happens to be a Wilmington resident. We've had meetings with Textron as a result of that liaison relationship. That's one that comes to mind. I would certainly defer to anyone else if anything kind of chumps out. The High School Building Committee, for example, Selectman Newhouse is the liaison to that committee as well. So, when it makes sense, the intent for that was to foster the cooperation that you talked about in your opening statement. It wasn't meant to be a big brother, big sister type thing, it was to address the comment that you felt that, you know, I know it was an analogy, but that you were invited for dessert, so we wanted to make sure that you were part of every process that we could afford you the opportunity to be a part of, and that we were in constant contact. So, that was the intent. I talked to Selectman Shump, and he explained to me the schedule and conflict, and said that you could have a phone conversation. We certainly could put you on every agenda and do it that way, but that phone conversation was meant to be a convenience factor for you, and that, you know, that's something where, you know, you can, we certainly would put you on the agenda when it made sense to do so, but that we would have more updates in memorandum form, or even live in the session, that wouldn't require this entire assembly to be here in order to get those updates. To that point, will you be meeting over the summer? Do you have meeting dates scheduled going forward?
We don't have meeting dates scheduled going forward, we don't have funds for a clerk for the summer, but that doesn't mean one of us can't volunteer, and we've done that in the past, and we're willing to do it again. It's just challenging, obviously, it's summertime, and we only meet once a month, but we probably will have to have a meeting. And, I'm more than happy to come to a Board of Selectmen meeting once a month, I have no problem with it. I don't necessarily need the whole commission to come with me, so I'm, I'm happy to, I know what it will alleviate some of Mr. Shump's responsibilities, and, you know, we all work really hard all day long, and, you know, that ended up being like a 15-hour day for me, and it probably was for him as well, and it, you know, it's just a scheduling thing, I think, more than anything. But, I'm happy to report on behalf of the commission, but if you want to keep the liaison, that's fine. I don't, I don't mean to fire him or say he's not welcome, he's more than welcome. But, the short answer to your question is, we don't have any meeting schedules for the summer as of yet.
Does anyone want to make any comments on that, or do we take it under advisement?
I, yeah, I just want to, I, just, anyone?
Yes.
Okay, Carolyn Harris, I just have two quick comments and a question. The first comment is, I'm really happy to see the open communication. You know, the commission has always worked well with the Board of Selectmen, town manager, committees and so forth, and I think tonight was, was really an example of information being shared both ways. So, I was very happy to see that, as a citizen, okay? My second comment, I agree with Mr. Newhouse, his concerns about the money that was spent and the efforts that have been put in for eight years on the Butters Farm. But, you know, what price tag do you put on history? We are so fortunate in Wilmington to have this iconic building, a first-period house of the Butters family, and the Butters family served in every military conflict, from the French-Indian War to Afghanistan. Theodore Butters is buried in Gettysburg, losing his life in the Battle of Gettysburg, he's at the National Cemetery there. So, I mean, that building is Wilmington. You know, God knows why it survived for 300 years, and now with the work we've put into it, it's hopefully going to survive long after we're not here, you know, for generations to come. So, it was well worth the time, the effort, the money, the aggravation at times to get this job done as far as we could get it done, you know, and I'm very proud of every member of the Historical Commission that I worked with over those years. And, and today, we have reached the point that we have to say, "What's the best interest for this house? Where should this house be?" And it is in private hands with somebody who's going to truly appreciate owning a first-period home. So, you know, I think moving ahead in this direction is, is the best. And my one question is, for the first time tonight, I heard the Roman House mentioned, and kind of a heads up. I don't know if the Board of Selectmen have, have been discussing the Roman House, if they're looking to take it down, you know, I hear all kinds of things in the community. And I want to say that when we had that, the high school committee was going through, I attended those meetings, and we discussed the Butters, the Roman House time and time again. What was told the Historical Commission was, it could be moved, or it could stay right where it was, and there were options of either moving it and keeping it. It's iconic to the historical district, it's iconic to, you know, generations of school kids. It is a prime example of a Victorian building that has been used for school offices, and I'm sure there are uses for it in the future, but it's the first time I've heard a Board of Selectmen mention it. So, I'm kind of curious, as a citizen, is this also an area or a building that you wish to take down?
Sure. I didn't want to interrupt you, but I appreciate the question. I will tell you, on behalf of the board, we have not had any formal discussions about the Roman House in terms of doing anything with the building. I don't want to speak to, for Selectman Shump, but this came out of town meeting, that there was a lot of discussion in the public comments, and there were some residents that, quite frankly, had gone on to public forums, and instead of coming and spending the time and being here tonight and asking the question in the manner that you have asked it, have put it on the patch and called out Selectman by name, saying, "What are your intentions?" And, nothing formally has been discussed. Will it in the future? Certainly, the board reserves the right to discuss any town topics, but to answer your question directly, I have not, as a member of this board, been part of any discussions that are official regarding the Roman House.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Because I brought it up, I feel compelled to at least acknowledge, yeah, and I'll completely concur with what Chairwoman O'Connell just said, that we don't engage in conversation other than the conversations you see us engaging in, unless we're negotiating in executive session, and this would not rise to that level. So, we have not had any substantive, any conversations at all about the Roman House. When I brought it up, it was really just, logic would suggest, my logic anyway, my logic would suggest that that would be on the radar screen at some near or not-so-near-term future kind of thing. So, you know, I suspected, as I said it, I was already speaking to people who must know this, right? You must know that the Roman House is something that's going to be discussed, and that it'll have to be contemplated over the course of the next, whatever, years. I don't even know what the timelines are, because it hasn't, hasn't been discussed. But, I just, I would hate for it to come onto the radar screen and for us to end up in a, you know, a perceived slight of communication, right? So, let's, let's not have any slights of communication, and let's make sure that when that time comes, whenever that is, that we're all at the same place. That's all.
Well, my concern, if I may say, on that, is that you're in the process of building the high school, and if this building was going to be moved, the prime area was to move it down to the corner of Adams Street, and that's because it's still in the historic district, and it's a major contributing factor of the historic district. And it could be used by the school as, as offices for special, whatever. You can't do that once the, the school and all the, you know, tennis courts and everything else are, are built, then it's even in a more dubious position as to what to do with it, if that's the decision or discussion that's going to go on. And there was a lot of discussion when the high school plans were, were being made about this particular building. That's what my concern is, as a private citizen.
Thank you for that. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to communications.
Under correspondence, I have a memo to the board, just updating you with regard to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline deliberations. I have received a confirmation from Richard Charbonneur, the Public Affairs Representative from Tennessee Gas, that a representative will be present on July 10th to outline the proposal for Tennessee Gas to extend a line through Wilmington, as well as other communities. As you know, the town of Pepperell has been leading an effort to establish a municipal coalition in opposition to the pipeline. They had submitted correspondence a couple of weeks ago, suggesting that it would be important for the impacted municipalities to communicate with them as soon as possible with regard to their intentions to join with this coalition. My recommendation is that the town participate in the coalition, but essentially reserve any judgment about the merits of the proposal until we've heard from Tennessee Gas. They are looking to have a meeting on July 1st at 10:00 a.m., presumably in Pepperell. Next is correspondence with regard to the Whitfield and Butters Farm. This essentially, in large measure, talks about many of the issues that were previously discussed, updating the board with regard to progress being made on Butters Farm, and discussions related to the Whitfield School about the RFP that we'll expect to have prepared by the end of July or beginning of August. by the end of July or beginning of August. Communications from Jennifer Jackson from the city of Woburn. Just read this one. Let's see, I wasn't sure to whom I should address this note. Hopefully, this is in the right hands. Just moved to Wilmington in November, and we're still learning the ropes. Tomorrow night, in Woburn City Council meeting, there will be a vote on permitting a scrap metal facility at 11095 R Main Street. I was hoping this was on Wilmington's radar. It is right on the town line. It'll certainly have an effect on South Wilmington residents. Associated crime traffic, roadware are almost certain if the facility obtains a permit to operate. I plan to attend the meeting and voice my objections, but I was also wondering if it might be something that the, that other residents should be made aware of. Next, under correspondence, is a letter that I sent to the city of Woburn, specifically to the city clerk, William Campbell, and also directing it to the council members. I was recently made aware the city of Woburn has opened a public hearing on a request to alter and extend a special permit for Woburn Truck and Auto, Inc., located at 11095 R Main Street. It is my understanding that the existing special permit allows a motor vehicle junkyard at the site. Further, I understand that approval of the request before the city council will increase the allowable operations and result in site being used as a scrap metal yard. The location of this property is adjacent to the Wilmington border and is accessible via Border Avenue in Wilmington. Further on, further, the business generally feeds traffic onto Route 38, which serves as a connector to Route 128 through Woburn, Route 3, and 495 through Wilmington, and Route 93 through Wilmington. The town of Wilmington believes that such a operation will increase truck traffic as the heavy trucks of varying sizes associated with this type of operation access and exit the scrap metal yard. With the existing level of traffic on Route 38 seeking to access Route 129 and heading north from Route 128, it is highly likely that streets in Wilmington will become the major route to and from the site, leading to increased heavy truck traffic through residential areas in our town. If the city council is inclined to approve this type of business, I respectfully request a truck restriction or conditioned requirement on the special permit to direct the applicant to file a truck, truck traffic plan with the city that restricts truck traffic, leaving the site from traveling north on Route 38 and using Wilmington as a means to reach the Interstate 93. I would just note also, as a follow-up, the, to the letter that went to Mr. Campbell, he notes, "The petitioner filed a request to withdraw the petition at last night's city council meeting. The city council approved the request. As of the moment, there is no longer anything pending before the city council with respect to this matter. An appeal of a cease and desist order of the building commissioner, in which he determined that the use was not allowed at the property, is still pending before the Board of Appeals." So I, I'm not sure we've heard the last of this one, but for now, it's on hold. Correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association, just highlighting this one. The Municipal Association is expressing concern about bills before the House and Senate, which would essentially remove local zoning controls over cell towers. Correspondence from Carol Hamilton, some memorandum that she wrote to me, again, expressing concern about the cell tower legislation attached to Senate Bill 2183, which is being opposed by MMA, which legislation places severe restrictions on local communities concerning location and co-location of cell towers. I'm also enclosing, enclosing a draft letter of opposition that I asked the Selectmen to send to Senator Tower voicing opposition to the bill. Recently, the Planning Board received a site plan review for cell tower co-location at the Congregational Church. That public hearing is still open. The Board has a number of concerns which have caused continuation of the hearing. If this bill were in effect, the Planning Board would not have been consulted about the co-location. It would have simply been allowed. One zoning bylaw strictly, our zoning bylaw strictly prohibits location of cell towers in residential areas. The location in the Congregational Church steeple was only allowed because all the equipment attendant to it, to its use could be located within the church building in existing structure. The co-locator cannot locate its equipment in the building, and is asking to erect a structure to house the equipment. The draft letter can be forwarded, so they're under Board to Consider, there's a letter to that effect. The next item is a letter, let's see, it's a letter from the Massachusetts State Lottery. This is directed to Board of Selectmen. The Mass State Lottery is offering existing non-poring agents our Kino to-go game, a transaction which is identical to the already existing online game, such as MegaBucks and Mass Cash. At the, at this time, the lottery is not providing agents with a Kino monitor as part of this program. In accordance with MGL Chapter 10, Section 27A, as amended, you are hereby notified that the following existing agents in your community will be sent an application and agreement to sell Kino to-go product, and this is specific to Route 38 Smoking Shop on 474 Main Street E. If you object to these agents selling Kino to-go, you must do so in writing within 21 days of the receipt of this letter, and it goes on to advise where to direct that correspondence. Then we also, under correspondence, have communication from Jill Reddish from the Verizon FiOS. This is notice regarding changes in the FiOS programming, and it references specific channels, And that does it for, under correspondence.
Okay. On the Board to Consider?
Board to Consider, the first item is, consider revoking the common victuals license granted to Blue Tree Restaurant DBA Subway 32622, is located at 285 B Main Street. This was granted, if you recall, at the last Selectmen's meeting. I believe it was the day, the following day after the meeting, the owners, or the prospective purchasers came in, spoke with Beverly, and advised that they were pulling out of the deal. And we do have correspondence that was provided to us by the attorney who's representing the individuals that were seeking to purchase the property. They essentially indicate that due to some outstanding issues with the property that apparently couldn't be resolved, their client was looking to pull out of the deal to acquire the Subway business. So the consequence of that is that the current owner remains operational. It would be my recommendation that the Board of Selectmen relinquish the common victuals license that was granted to Blue Tree Restaurant, doing business at Subway 32622, and, and the existing owner, or the existing owner of the business would be allowed to continue to operate under their common victuals license.
Wait a minute. The, the applicant that came before us obviously was going to purchase the assets of the company and, in anticipation of that, applied for the victuals license.
Yes.
Okay. But the victuals license that had previously been in effect was never surrendered or revoked.
That's right.
Okay. So is there any reason why the holder of the new license doesn't just surrender it to us?
Well, the, the holder of the, the new license never, never picked it up. So they came in the day following to say, the, the deal has fallen through, we're no longer interested, we're looking to, we're, we're not looking for that common victuals license.
Okay. Again, and I'm not looking to make him out of a mullhill. The applicant says he doesn't want the victuals license.
Right.
I guess whenever I see considering revoking a license, that always kind of triggers, you know, a question about due process and everything else. So, so I'm curious, is it necessary to revoke that? We've never actually perfected the issuance, right?
Well, yeah, the, the current owner never picked it up. I believe that the fact that the Board granted the common victuals to the, to Mr. Ashpichkumar Patel would then mean that the current owner's common victular would be surrendered. So my recommendation would be that the Board essentially rescind the vote of, of June 9th, and that the common victulars license that had been in place, continues to be in place with the existing owner.
Okay. So I, based on that explanation, I move that the Board rescind the issuance of the common victual license granted to Blue Tree Restaurant DBA Subway 32622, in accordance with the request of the applicant's counsel.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Any unanimous? Thank you.
Okay. The Board to Consider Participation in the Coalition of Municipalities. Again, this, going back to the previous correspondence, Pepperell is looking to establish this coalition. My recommendation would be that the Board authorize participation in the coalition, reserving judgment about the merits until we've had an opportunity to hear from Tennessee Gas. As part of that correspondence, the town of Pepperell is also looking for the Board of Selectmen to designate a representative to serve on this coalition, the expectation being to have a, an elected member of the Board, as well as someone from the town's administration to serve, so essentially two representatives. The first meeting is July 1st, which is certainly right around the corner. So I would recommend participation in the meeting for informational purposes at this point.
Okay. Questions?
Is it your, yes. Is it your recommendation to have an appointee who's your designee from the administration?
Yes. I mean, I think the, I can certainly designate someone. I guess the other piece is whether the Board is interested in designating someone from, from the Board to serve as well.
Yeah. My, my inclination is certainly to accept your recommendation to participate and make sure there's somebody at the table who's bringing information back to us. But if we're having them in on July 10th, I still feel as though, you know, asking a member of the Board to go to that meeting before we really have that information, I'm, you know, unless we lose that opportunity, I'm inclined to support authorizing you to designate a member, and then let's see how the July 10th meeting goes and see how the Board, you know, what the Board thinks about the, the whole project before we go jumping on to another committee, you know? You know, anybody else thinks of that?
I would agree with that.
So at that, then, Madam Chair, I would move to, move to direct the Town Manager to delegate a, an administrative member to participate in the Coalition of Municipalities.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay. We have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, please, Madam Chair. I, I concur with a, a designee that Jeff identifies to send to the meeting. I guess I'm a little shaky with joining the coalition. There, the Pepperell Board of Selectmen, in their first letter to us back in June 3rd, said, "The Pepperell Board of Selectmen have been investigating means in which to support the citizen opposition to the proposed northeast extension, yada, yada, yada." And again, the, I think they're, let's see, in a more recent communication, there was, I'm looking for the language, but the language was, was that kind of stuff. It's, it's very clear that their intent is to oppose this project. And so my question really is to Jeff, if I may, is I, I appreciate your recommendation that we articulate an interest in participating in the coalition, but reserve judgment. And I, I feel, I'm shaky as to whether or not we can do that. My concern is that by participating in the coalition, we ipso facto have signed on to oppose the, the pipeline. And I, I don't know that I oppose or, or support the pipeline, frankly, at this point. So I don't want to say, no, let's not join the coalition, but I'm also a little bit leery about joining. And maybe I'm making a mountain out of a mullhill. We ought to probably just sign on, and if it comes down to the point after July 10th, when the pipeline, when Tennessee Pipeline presents to us, that we regret having signed on, we can pull ourselves off hypothetically, but, I don't know. I guess I wanted to have that conversation. Your motion was to, I believe, allow Jeff to send a representative. I don't think in the motion it said, let's sign the document that says we're part of the coalition. I don't know if those are two separate things, or if it's all assumed to be one thing at the same time. I'm sorry.
I, I think that's certainly a reasonable approach. You know, I can send someone to the meeting on July 1st, and then, you know, once we've had the representatives out from Tennessee Gas, then there can be further consideration as to whether to formally join or not. You know, I, I don't imagine that the, the Pepperell Board of Selectmen is going to turn down individuals if, or communities if they elect to sign up later. So I think that's, that's an appropriate approach.
Thank you, then.
I think the intent was that, you know, was to have the opportunity to go to the meeting prior to them coming in to see us, so that we would get some additional information from other communities that have already received the presentation, and that we would glean useful information, that we might be able to ask more probing questions when they come in for the meeting here on the 10th. So perhaps we just, we still send a letter, and it's all in the phrasing of what's in there, per se, to say that, you know, we'd like to have a seat at the table at the coalition. I'm just throwing that out there. But I think it's important that we have a seat at the table for that meeting, because I think it will be useful for our meeting on the 10th.
I completely concur.
So we have a motion on the floor at this point?
Okay.
Is everyone clear on what we're voting on? We have, we have a motion made, and we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Any unanimous? Thank you. Okay.
Next item under Board to Consider, this is signing the street acceptance plan. If you recall, at the last meeting, this was scheduled on the agenda. I had some questions about, just being clear on, making sure that the documents were accurate. In fact, there's two documents that the Board is being asked to consider here. One is the right-of-way conveyance. This is on Eleanor Drive. It's essentially 43,600, 43,763 square feet. This is the roadway itself. This was authorized at Town Meeting in terms of street acceptance. And then there's, the other element to this, if you will, is a temporary easement, which is at the, at the cul-de-sac on Eleanor Drive. This easement will remain in effect until the road is extended, which my expectation it will be at, at it will be at a point in time when the Murray Development is completed, and then that easement would be, would be removed. So the documents are in order, and I would recommend that the Board assign both the right-of-way as well as the temporary easement.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made. We have a second? All those in favor? unanimous? Thank you.
Board to Consider signing a letter in opposition to the cell towers. This is the letter that was referenced earlier. I'll just read it. "The Board of Selectmen has learned that Senate Bill 2183 has been reported out of Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy. Some aspects of the bill are somewhat similar to fairly recently, fairly recent changes in two FCC requirements concerning local review of co-location of equipment. However, this bill goes significantly beyond that in removing effective local review and the ability to require community concerns to be addressed. We wish to register our strong opposition to this bill and to its attack on local home rule. We are specifically opposed to Section 2A of the bill, which eliminates local zoning review of co-location applications, and requests this section be eliminated from the bill. Timeframes established for local review, Section 2B, would allow an applicant the ability to circumvent review by submitting an incomplete application and receive constructive approval as the clock runs down. Boards requiring the assistance of an expert will be hard-pressed to complete an RFP process in this timeframe. No other land use is allowed such limited review time. A timeframe of 90 days to reach a final decision should be the minimum. Section 2C allows the applicant 60 days to appeal. The standard timeframe for all others is 20 days. Why should the wireless industry receive such an extended period? Section 3C eliminates the town's ability to require removal of obsolete, abandoned wireless facilities. Section 3G limits third-party review fees to $1,000. This limitation is completely inadequate and amounts to a prohibition on legitimate third-party review of these projects. The vast majority of municipalities do not have in-house capability to review technical aspects of cell tower location or co-location. The Board of Selectmen is seeking your strong support to oppose House Bill 4181, Section 74 and 75, and oppose Senate Bill 2183 in act upgrading mobile broadband coverage in the Commonwealth. Residents expect their communities to exercise reasonable control over the location of cell towers. Thank you for your consideration."
Okay, the law has been read. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept and sign the letter of opposition to the proposed cell tower legislation.
Okay, motion's been made. Second?
Second.
Second, motion's been made and second. Anything further? All those in favor?
Upstanding.
Okay. For accepting, one abstaining.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the record, based on the Planning Director's memorandum, it's unclear to me whether or not I have a conflict of interest, so I just want some time to explore that. And in the meantime, if I could ask that this draft letter be changed to remove my name. I don't want there to be any
Sure.
insinuation as to whether I support it or don't support it until I can ferret out that conflict question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, that we'll have to, we'll have a new draft, and then perhaps if the Board adopts this, can stop in, yeah.
Or we just take a period, Susan? Just cut the very bottom line?
That'll work.
There you go. I appreciate it.
Do we need to amend the motion?
I think the motion is good. We'll just
Just remove, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Is there, that was voted for.
So we'll hold off on signing. Okay. Public comments, we're seeing none. New Business Committee reports, starting on my left.
I was going to report as a liaison from the Historical Commission, but apparently I have no report. So no, thank you. Just a simple wish that everyone has a wonderful Fourth of July. We're going to hear a lot about Fourth of July scheduling in a few moments, and for those of you that participate in activities on the Common or up at the Shriners, be safe and have a lot of fun and be neighborly. Thank you.
I'm good, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Over here.
Good, thank you.
Okay, I'm all set.
Okay, under Important Dates, High School Building Committee meeting is tomorrow here at the Town Hall, Room 9, 6:30. Sunday, Sundays through October 2nd at the Farmer's Market, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. We have the Fourth of July festivities starting up July 2nd through July 5th. Just for informational purposes, anyone looking for information can call 978-657-8081 or go online to funonthe4th.com. July 4th is actually the Fun, Family Day on the Town Common. July 5th is the fireworks at the Shriners. July 6th, we have Haunted Tavern Open House, 10:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. July 8th is the next Yentown Farm Development Committee meeting at the Town Hall in the Auditorium, 6:00 p.m. July 9th, Brush Drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. July 9th, Concert on the Common. The fare for the evening is the Cactus Gang, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. July 10th, Board of Selectmen's next meeting will be meeting in the auditorium across the way, 7:00 p.m. July 12th, Brush Drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. July 16th, Concert on the Common. The group performing that evening is radio waves, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then July 23rd, the Yentown Farm Workshop, Wilmington Middle School Cafeteria at 7:00 p.m. I would just add one other thing. The resurfacing is going to be taking place on Chestnut Street tomorrow, beginning at 7:00 a.m. between Hillside Way and Butters Row. The expectation is to finish the work tomorrow, but it could go into the following day, depending upon delays.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second?
Motion made and second. All those in favor? Thank you very much.